Good evening. I'd like to call the April 10, 2012 Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call, Valerie?
Mayor Coombs?
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley, Finley?
Here.
Levison?
Here.
Samori?
Present.
Santos?
Here.
Witt?
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
Thank you. Let's stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak to the first call public invited to be heard will need to have had his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at the final call public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. Next, we have the minutes from March 26, 2012 meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? May I have a motion? Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to move the minutes of that day.
All right, let's vote. Okay, it was six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. Next, we have the minutes of March 27, 2012 meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Councilmember Finley?
I just would like to move that we pass those minutes too.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. There was a copy of a grant application placed at your desk that goes with item 9B. The one that was included in your packet only included every other page, and so this is a copy of the complete grant.
Thank you. Is there a report from the city manager?
Not at this time, Mayor Council.
Okay, we have no special reports and presentations, so we'll move on to the first call public invited to be heard. First person is Steve Don Allen. Please come up and state your name and address.
Howdy. Steve Don Allen, 2437 Turanian, Longmont. Mayor, city council members, this will be my last public invited to be heard session with you. Barbara and I are moving south to Arizona to be living near our daughter and son-in-law. We sold our house in just eight days for a fair price. Of course, we will always miss you and our great stay here in beautiful, all-American city of Longmont. It was an honor and privilege to be a Longmont, Colorado resident. I'll be watching the city council and Strider, of course, on the Internet. Don't be surprised to hear from me from time to time. Just as I continue to vote in Chicago, I'll be voting early and often in the Longmont elections in years to come. Best wishes to one and all. Thank you, and thanks, Longmont.
Thank you, Steve. Strider Benson?
Yes.
Hey, Steve. Steve, I did warn the council down in Arizona about you.
I see Councilmember Bagley has arrived. Benson, you've gotten her rate four or five times in a row, but we're still working on that. Strider Benson, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I would just like to offer my appreciation to Steve Don Allen for his insightful comments on many different types of things, many of which I agree with, some of which I don't. But he's really been an upstanding citizen in trying to put forward the interests of the community as a whole. And that's what we're here for. I've had a rough day. I biked into Boulder to World Affairs Conference, and the main person I went there to see got called to jury duty in Wisconsin today. So then I rushed back. And so just basic stuff. I appreciate Councilmember Bagley's role on the task force, I guess it is. And I fear that it was kind of a done deal before it ever got set up. But at least we have some public representation and input, and we still need to see what we can do as a home rural community in face of the juggernaut that is running roughshod over our community and health rights. All you need to do is look at what's happening in North Dakota right now. It's really tragic. And I think most of the members of council, most of the time, have been doing their best to put the community's interest at heart. And I hope that continues, and I know we have some severe issues coming up. And let's just function as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Strider. There are no ordinances on the second reading or public hearing scheduled, so we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Valerie, will you read the titles of the consent items?
Sure. Mayor Coombs, first item on the consent agenda is 9A. It's ordinance 2012-20, a bill for an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with the All-America Investment Group, LLC, as lessor for energy-efficient equipment for several city buildings. The public hearing and second reading for this item is scheduled for April 24, 2012. Item 9B is Resolution R. 2012-25, this is a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program. And that's the grant item that was placed at your table tonight. Item 9C is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a public improvement agreement for East Gate Second Filing, which is also known as Shadow Grass Park. Item 9D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an application and agreement for sanitary sewer tap outside city limits at 2070 Clyde Court. And item 9E is approve $50,000 allocation for 2012 Neighborhood Improvement Program grant funding. here for. I've had a rough day. I biked into Boulder to World Affairs Conference, and the main person I went there to see got called to jury duty in Wisconsin today. So then I rushed back. And so, just basic stuff. I appreciate Councilmember Bagley's role on the task force, I guess it is, and I fear that it was kind of a done deal before it ever got set up, but at least we have some public representation and input, and we still need to see what we can do as a home-rural community in face of the juggernaut that is running roughshod over our community and health rights. All you need to do is look at what's happening in North Dakota right now. It's really tragic, and I think most of the members of council, most of the time, have been doing their best to put the community's interest at heart, and I hope that continues, and I know we have some severe issues coming up, and let's just function as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Strider. There are no ordinances on the second reading or public hearing scheduled, so we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Valerie, will you read the titles of the consent items?
Sure. Mayor Coombs, first item on the consent agenda is 9A. It's ordinance 2012-20, a bill for an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with the All-America Investment Group, LLC, as lessor for energy-efficient equipment for several city buildings. The public hearing and second reading for this item is scheduled for April 24, 2012. Item 9B is Resolution R. 2012-25. This is a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving a grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program, and that's the grant item that was placed at your table tonight. Item 9C is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a public improvement agreement for East Gate Second Filing, which is also known as Shadow Grass Park. Item 9D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an application and agreement for sanitary sewer tap outside city limits at 2070 Clyde Court. And item 9E is approve $50,000 allocation for 2012 Neighborhood Improvement Program grant funding, and there are no items that staff needs to pull from the consent agenda.
Okay. Are there any items that the council wants to remove from the consent agenda? Councilmember Levison.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to pull 9E, the Neighborhood Improvement Fund grant funding, since we have John Clark here. Like to hear a little more about that.
All right.
So I moved the consent agenda. Items A through D, Mayor.
All right, let's vote on that. It passes seven to zero with Brian Bagley now here. We missed you. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clark, could you please come down and tell us a little bit about the grants that were decided, how they were decided, and give us a couple of highlights of the improvements that are generated, those ideas that are generated from our community leaders and Neighborhood Group Leaders Association, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is John Clark, and I am your Community Neighborhood Resources Supervisor. I'm pleased to be here tonight. The grant process, let me just first say that 44 neighborhoods were eligible to apply for grants this year. That's a record number out of about 60 registered neighborhood groups. That means that those 44 neighborhood groups attended at least two-thirds of the NGLA meetings. We've been averaging over 55 attendees at those meetings. We received a total of 19 grants. There were three that were withdrawn because parks or other things couldn't approve them, or they didn't have a water audit, and then the neighborhood group leaders actually, using criteria, ranked the grants, and what is in front of you is the top, the top 12 grants that they recommended to be funded. And there's a number of different kinds of grants, anything from water conservation to electricity in the park for special events, play components at Collier Park implement the historic East Side Park plan. Old North Longmont is also making improvements in Alta Park. That's one of our revitalization neighborhoods. So there's a variety of different kinds of grants, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions if there may be.
Councilmember Levison.
And just again for the record, John, the grants that we're doing are $49,054, and then the amount that the community is going to give back in labor and volunteer work, and then also some matching, cash matching, again, that is $27,000? Is that correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, that is correct. Typically, annually, in these grants, the neighborhood provides at least a third in-kind, so for every dollar we spend, the neighborhood spends about 50 cents in either hard dollars or in-kind services. And they're also, it's an opportunity for them to choose in a small way how they spend their tax dollars.
Thank you. I think it's great that we spend $49,000, and then the rest of the community that are getting grants pitches in another $27,000. Makes the money a bit leveraged, and I think it's a wonderful piece of community building. The other thing I'd like to point out is that, you know, the play components for Collier Park, the master plan, was done in 2002 and 2003, I believe, but the initial funding for the master planning of Collier Park came from a Neighborhood Improvement Fund grant. So it takes, even if you plan something, have a master plan, it sometimes takes 10 years to get it done, and I know that people are very pleased with the improvements they see going around, going up around Collier Park now with the train theme and then the other parks. I think it gives hope for other parks like the Alta Park neighborhood to see their improvements start and know that they build gradually over time, too. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. Councilmember Levison.
Yeah, thank you. I move that we approve the 2012 Neighborhood Improvement Program grant funding.
All right, it's been moved in second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Wow, we're just flying through this tonight. Valerie, could you introduce the general business assignments?
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Valerie Skitt. I'm your city clerk, and you have before you tonight some board and committee appointments for some vacancies we have on our boards. Several of them, a couple of them just have one applicant. The first one is the Longmont Housing Authority, which has one on expired term ending in December of 2013. We have one applicant for that position, which is James Ferguson, and we'd like either a motion to appoint Mr. Ferguson or to open it back up for more applications.
Councilmember Witt.
I would move that we appoint James Ferguson.
All right.
We'll have to be in low-tech vote.
Okay.
With a raise of hands. Thank you. Okay, the second one is the Museum Advisory Board. We have one on expired term ending in December of 2013, and one applicant, which is Jennifer Turnahoy, and we either need a motion to appoint Ms. Turnahoy or to reopen it.
Councilmember Witt.
I would move that we appoint Ms. Turnahoy.
All right, it's been moved in second. Let's vote.
And the last one is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have several applicants for that. There are some ballots at your desk for this one. We have one unexpired regular term ending December of 2013. A couple of these applicants you interviewed at the end of last year, and several of them were with a previous recruitment as well. Councilmember Santos voted for Alicia Howell. Mayor Coombs voted for Alicia Howell. Councilmember Samori voted for Alicia Howell. Councilmember Witt voted for Alicia Howell. Councilmember Finley voted for Alicia Howell. Councilmember Bagley voted for James Ferguson, and Councilmember Levison voted for Michael Cooperman, so Alicia Howell received five votes. Before we move on, I do have one question. We have mid-year boards that have some terms expiring that we are beginning to recruit for, that is the LDDA and the MOPC. These would not be ones that you have interviewed before. We haven't typically set up an interview process mid-year, but we can certainly do that if that is your wish, so I'd just like to know before we go too far.
Councilmember Levison.
Also, Valerie, I saw in our information packet, we had a resignation for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also, unfortunately, we've lost a number, another member of our Museum Advisory Board, the Chair, Glendora Schaefer, recently, very recently, and very sadly. So I'm wondering if we have a cluster, maybe the council's preference would be to do some interviews. If we have five or six different openings, it might be relevant to do interviews. I would be in favor if we had a group like that to do it. So I move that we do interviews with the mid-year appointments and also the additional recruitments that we'll do for those two boards where we've had either resignation or death in the board.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
You'll have to raise your hands.
That's right. All right, so that passed.
Want to post? Thank you very much.
Next is our final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council at this time?
Shelley Basman, share the surface fights at 3414 Lakeview Circle. First acknowledgment, to Strider, who often brings props to make his message, to our son, who in junior, when he was in junior high, made this snake, and to Shel Silverstein, who's a favorite poet of ours and maybe of ours. And I have some apologies to the BOA constrictors of the world for making them a metaphor tonight for top operators, oily gas extraction companies, that is Stocking Trail Ridge Middle School and has Union Reservoir in its sights. Top operators has one of the least stellar reputations in the oil and gas extraction field, so I apologize, Mr. Snake. And here's my rendition of Shel Silverstein. Oh, we're gonna be eaten by a BOA constrictor, a BOA constrictor, a BOA constrictor. Oh, we're gonna be eaten by a BOA constrictor, and we won't like it one bit. Oh, no, it's nibbling by our toes. Oh, jeez, it's up to our knees. Oh, fiddle, it's up to our middle. Oh, heck, it's up to our neck. Oh, dread. There's one sure way not to get eaten by a BOA constrictor, and it is to be very far away from it, and the same is true of oil and gas consolidated mining. Longmont's regulations should have setbacks that give children and families the most protection. An engineer speaking in Pennsylvania said that no one gets healthier by being around oil and gas wells. And former, our former city manager Gordon Pedro, who is very much admired in Longmont, recently encouraged the city to stand up, to stand tall, and be bold, and fight for our community against the tyrants at the state, bullies of the state. So that encouragement, me and the BOA constrictor encourage you to stand tall and fight for Longmont's citizens' health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. It's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I have three things. One, I've seen it lately a couple times, and it's warming up, it's starting to be nice outside. I would just remind parents not to leave small children in the car while you're grunting and erring or dropping off children at school. I've seen it twice. I've called the school where my kids go to school and made them aware. I have the person's license plate number. It's not safe. I know it's cool in the morning, but regardless, you shouldn't have any, any child should be left alone in a car. Then get out, start it up, do whatever. It's not safe. When it gets hot. Too many horror stories about that. On some, one lighter note, then I'll end with a kind of a low note. I'd like to congratulate Steve Strong, who is the Longspreek Council Boys of America recipient of the Colonel Dan Street Distinguished Citizen Award. That dinner's going on right now, and I would just like to congratulate Steve Strong and his family. Steve's a very good advocate for the city of Longmont. Having known Dan Street before his passing, I believe it's a great honor for Steve to be able to be named the Colonel Dan Street Distinguished Citizen. And lastly, as Councilmember Levison mentioned, Glendora Schaefer, who one time was the board, museum board, direct, excuse me, chair, passed away very suddenly just last week. My wife grew up with Glendora and her, with Glendora's daughter, Angenee. My, when I got on the board as council liaison, when I first got on council, museum board was one of my first boards, and Glendora sat me down and got me to understand what happens at the museum. She will be greatly missed. She was an educator by trade, educated teachers to become better educators, and was a very great advocate for the museum. Was a docent at the museum. She will be greatly missed by her family, Jack, Jason, and Angenee, and her numerous grandchildren. So my best to the Schaefer family in what was a very sudden passing. Thank you.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to, as, make people aware that the Senior Center is going to be having an open house on April 27 from 5 until 7. This isn't your grandparents' Senior Center. Please go and check it out. I am counting down the years until I get to participate in some of these great activities. So actually, I'm going to, you know, invite myself along on some of these things as my role as liaison to the Senior Advisory Board. But we have people who come from Arvada to play ping pong. They have zumba. They have great classes. They have lunch wagon. They go out to eat. They are even starting to take trips. You have to pay for them, obviously, but they have certified, oh, oh, the word. No, not gerontologist, but yes. It's a trip planner person. I'm going to move on. Travel agent, thank you. And nobody uses, and yet, and yet. So you can go in a group if you're a single person or maybe not in great health, but you still, you'll be in a group and be able to go and see some of the things that you didn't get to see before. So come to the Senior Center on April 27 from 5 to 7, and it should be a good time.
Councilmember Finley.
I think you should go from 5 to 6 and then go to the Ed Green Scholarship Dinner for the Sister Cities that same evening, actually. I also wanted to mention my business of the week. It was suggested to me by an old friend that I recommend this business, and it was an excellent idea, the pantry market at 1111 Francis Street, right on the corner of 11th and Francis. If you have sore muscles or bad knees like I do, or if you're just short on time, you can run in there and find anything that you need. They've been there forever. It's a great place, great baked goods, great butcher. So I recommend the pantry market this week.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. I'd like to report back on something that I'm working with, with CML Policy Committee. The suggestion that our council made to add a policy statement around education and support for education has been working its way through Policy Committee for two years now. We've had, last year, they didn't really want to move forward with anything, and then this year, we've put it off twice, and we formed a subcommittee to work on the wording instead of trying to wordsmith it with the whole committee. So we had a meeting by telephone with a few of us yesterday, and Sandy Cedar is helping out on this. And so this is the proposed wordsmith statement we'll take, again, for discussion, the first iteration of it. So this would, this is how it reads. Education. A healthy and vibrant education sector supplies our communities with an educated and well-trained workforce that attracts new businesses and allows existing businesses to compete effectively in an increasingly competitive global economy. This healthy education starts at birth and spans throughout each resident's lifetime from early learning through K-12, higher education, job training, and lifelong learning. Many of our most effective programs are ones when we work in partnership with our educational institutions to provide lifelong learning and literacy opportunities to our residents. Due to its importance to our communities, the League supports education as a community-wide value, including, and there are three bullet points. Support state and local policies and initiatives that spotlight and encourage greater early learning, K-12- learning, K-12, higher education, and workforce training opportunities for youth, along with access to information and resources that will help parents and caregivers give students the greatest chances to learn and grow in safe and healthy ways." Second bullet point. "Support state initiatives that enhance creative partnership opportunities with businesses and the various education institutions, including shared facility, school resource officers, and enhanced programming that meets the needs of our residents." Third bullet point. "Support funding of education in the state, but not at the expense of municipal revenues, as municipalities do provide educational experiences for all residents through facilities such as our libraries, recreation centers, museums, and cultural centers." So that's the proposal. We're trying to keep it short. And if you have any additional comments, Sandy can provide you with, the other one was just a paragraph, and, and I think there was some not very clear statements around, we're not trying to, to make any necessarily big statements on allocation of funding to the state, but just saying, you know, that education is an important component of our communities. And that would allow the League to take a position on, you know, certain educational bills as they come up. I mean, I, I think we had, Sandy, can you give us a, for example, because we thought of something yesterday, I think we, we discussed a little bit, what bill recently might have this been able to be an advocacy for?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, there were a couple bills, I think, that we've encountered over the last few years. Most recently, the asset bill was one that we were talking about, which would provide in-state tuition for folks that were Colorado high school students, regardless of their documentation. There's no fiscal impact necessarily to the state, certainly not to municipalities, but because it's not part of the League's statement, and there's no way really to support that from a League's perspective. Also, President Schaefer a few years ago put out some legislation that would help with some job training for teachers and really put them in different schools and kind of get them up to, not in different school districts rather than just necessarily their own. And so that was something that we, that the League may have supported if, if, if given the chance.
So the, the rest of the procedure is that the, we sent this out to the task force members or subcommittee members, and then we'll do whatever additional wordsmithing and have another telephone meeting, and then submit it to the CML staff for their look. And then the Policy Committee meets in May again. And then if that's accepted and approved by the Policy Committee, it would go to the Executive Board for adoption at the annual meeting into the policy statement. So I'd appreciate if you have comments on, maybe can make some, some suggestions about what would make it better. I appreciate, and I guess send that to Sandy, because we're collecting all the comments through her.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, I apologize for being tardy. Someone locked me out of my car, and I was quite appalled. Had to call my wife for backup, so my apologies for the tardiness. Luckily, however, I got here when I did, or else it would have been over, would have missed the party, because tonight was the one night I had turned over a new leaf. I was getting a vote for the extension past 11:00. This was it. The one chance, people. I'm, uh, also on a lighter note, I want to congratulate former Mayor Baum and our Mayor Dennis Coombs for making national headlines on the Jay Leno Show. Apparently, there was a picture of a former Mayor Baum, and off to the side it said, "Longmont Gets a New Mayor. Fraud Expected to Continue." So congratulations on that, Mayor. Great press. And then, um, and then, and then on a serious note, I didn't know Glendora Schaefer very well, but I echo the eloquent comments of Mayor Protem Santos. That's a pretty tight-knit board, and she will be missed.
Yeah, my wife Kristen knew her from teaching, and she will be missed. You know, I, I had a, a thought. You know, we have this Board of Environmental Affairs, and I'm wondering, you know, since information is free, can we instruct the Board of Environmental Affairs basically to review the NOAA data about the area air pollution and see if they can glean any information that they could feed back? Would anybody be willing to, want to direct them to do that? If I make a mo, well, I'll make a motion that we do that.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to actually ask for that to be given to the members of council, but I was going to do that in an email tomorrow, since it's probably more imperative that the council get that and look it over. So I'd be more comfortable if, because if we're going to do that, then let's go, then we'll need to send it to all the boards that we had with the so-called super committee, including Planning and Zoning as well. They were all involved, but I would prefer just come to council and let us look at it. You know, we have time.
Yeah.
And because this is, you know, we've all talked about it, this is one of the important issues that, that we will see in quite a while, and it'd probably incumbent on us to be able to, to dig through it first.
Councilmember Levinson?
I, I don't see there's any harm in the Board of Environmental Affairs taking a look at this and maybe having it a discussion item on their agenda. When, when is the next BEA meeting? Has it already occurred this month?
It's the third Wednesday.
So they could, how, I don't know how quickly they could get that data and, and have it looked at. We need to, we would get it almost simultaneously with them, and I, I support Mayor Coombs' idea because, you know, they're there to make comment, we have to direct them to review something. So I don't see how it would harm anything to, to have people that have those qualifications, that some of the BEA members do have some scientific background and, and could help us evaluate things. I'd be interested in hearing their views. And, you know, they can state an opinion, and it's just another part of information gathering, in my opinion. So I, I would ask people to, to vote to support this motion.
Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. Anytime somebody's willing to read a complicated report, sum it up, spit it back, I'm all for it. I don't see the downside. I'd support it.
Councilmember Witt?
Well, to Mayor Protem's point, do we want to make friendly amendment and say it needs to be sent to all the boards that were involved in the super committee?
I think the motion's standing as it is.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? All right. Let's vote. Okay, it passes 43 with Councilmembers Santos, Witt, and Finley.
No, dissenting.
Dissent, excuse me. Sorry. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, then if we're going to let one board see it, we should allow the other boards to see it. I don't like the whole idea of substituting and things of that nature and let the motions pass the way they're, they're presented. So I would move that we would go ahead and send it to the other boards that were part of the super committee, including the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think that's also a great idea. And I would also ask politely if you could please send it to us as well, like you were planning on doing, Mayor Protem. Thanks.
All right. Let's vote on that. Okay, that passes 7 to 0. All right. Any further discussions or comments from council? Seeing none, city manager, do you have any additional remarks?
Mayor, council, Sandy reminded me that as it starts warming up in Colorado, we start having a lot of questions regarding the sign ordinance. So you will see that we have given you all a brochure to answer some questions. And obviously, if council has any more in-depth questions regarding the information in the brochure, please feel free to call us, and we'll do what we can to assist you.
All right. City Attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.